...meetings, we actually have a public hearing first that we're going to go through. It should only last about five minutes or so and then we'll go into our regular scheduled city council meeting. I do call this meeting to order and we'll have Sandy take role for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan. Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczalski.
Here.
Dave Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Yep.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Jillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thanks Sandy. Would you also read the purpose of the hearing for us?
Notice is hereby given that the common council of the city of Wapaka will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 18, 2013 at 6:25 PM in the council chambers of City Hall, 111 South Main Street, Wapaka, Wisconsin, to hear testimony on whether to amend the year 2030 Comprehensive Plan Preferred Land Use Map, MAP 8-43, with regards to 407, 415, and 515 School Street properties and other map corrections. The hearing will be for the purpose of giving an opportunity for any person interested, their attorneys or agents to be heard. A copy of the proposed map amendment may be obtained from the City Planning and Development Office, signed by Henry Velker, City Administrator Clerk, published May 16, 2013.
Thanks Sandy. At this time then, we would ask anybody that would like to give testimony in favor of the subject to please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor of? Brennan, maybe this would be appropriate for you to just explain what we're doing here. You could just do it right there. Or Erin?
John.
Or John? Well, one of you three, would you?
You'd like to know what this is regarding? Okay. This is a, I don't have it in front of me, I can't get on the internet right now, but this relates to a modification of a comprehensive plan to modify the zoning, and Henry, maybe you can help me with this, from an existing...
Now we got Henry.
Existing land use of what to what?
Well, right now, it is zoned residential, R1, and these changes need to be made to accommodate the purchase of the alternative school by the city, and we're going to be rezoning it to a business class, I believe it'll be four. So, this is required whenever you take a zoning action, it's got to be in compliance with your comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan calls for this area to be, you know, residential, so it's sort of a change the comprehensive plan and then the zoning change will come in behind it.
Okay, so if we all understand, this is the property where the recreation center is and the former alternative school, and then also includes the administrative buildings on School Street, too. We did have a special code, or we still do have a special code, where we can have schools in a residential area, but we are changing that, and so we need to change the comprehensive plan to match that. Do we have any other testimony in favor? If we don't, we need test, if anybody would like to give testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition? If not, I declared this hearing closed at 6:31 PM. We'll go right into the regular council meeting. I do call the June city council meeting to order, the second June council meeting, this is Tuesday, June 18, 2013. That is 6:32 PM, I call the meeting to order. We'll start with the youth of the month. We have Mary Ann Schneider, who is going to introduce the youth. Mary Ann, if you want to come up, bring the youth with you. Not right here, sorry.
I'm Mary Ann Schneider, and this is Logan Frandrup. And Logan's kind of a crummy speller, and he doesn't really enjoy writing a lot, so he's probably wondering why his eighth grade English teacher is giving him this award. But Logan has a lot of characteristics that make him a student of the month, and I want to just mention a few of them. When I would assign a big project, Logan would get a pained look on his face, kind of like he has right now. Yeah, I know, that's okay. But I'd explain it, and then he'd work on it, and he'd take it home and work on it some more, and he'd come into study hall and work some more, and he showed qualities of perseverance, he was always responsible to get things done when he needed to, he always asked a lot of questions, and he always, anytime he made mistakes, he came in, apologized, he learned from his mistakes. So, all those qualities make Logan a really good student of the month, and will help him a lot in high school and in later life. His friend Christian is supposed to be here, and the reason I chose the two together was because collaboration is really important now in school and in careers, and Christian and Logan are like the models in our middle school of collaboration, because these two guys know each other so well, and they use each other's strengths to just to solve whatever kind of problems they have. So, the two of them together were just a real good example to the rest of the middle school students. So, congratulations, Logan, I wish Christian was here, you'll have to tell him.
That's not a lie.
We're going to ask Logan to lead us in the pledge. Everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United Saints of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, Logan.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have Sandy read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also, would you take role for us?
I will. Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan. Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczalski.
Here.
Dave Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Yep.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Jillian Peterson.
Here.
Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Sandy. We have items on your consent agenda tonight. All of these items will be taken care of with one motion and one vote. Are there any items that council members or staff would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda where they could be acted on on an individual basis? If not, we would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented to us.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hackett. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Regular agenda, Sandy has a few things that were on your desk when you showed up tonight that she's going to explain to us.
All right, under number eight, action items, letter C, Board of Public Works, number two, a letter from Robert E. Leon Associates, Inc., was distributed regarding the anaerobic digester bid award. Under number eight, action items, letter D, Parks and Recreation Board, number one, a memo from Aaron Jensen was distributed regarding the tractor award of bid. Under number eight, action items, letter E, Personnel Committee, number one, a corrected memorandum from Henry Velker was distributed regarding the water and wastewater treatment plant certified operator pay scales. Under number seven, number three, a drawing of the Wapaka South Park Concept Site Plan was distributed. And that's it.
Thanks Sandy. Anything else from council members or staff? Again, then we would need a motion with these additions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions noted by Sandy.
Second.
Motion by Shamble, second by Olson, to approve the regular agenda with these four additions. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we do have a certificate of appreciation to John Pori for his recognition of 12 years of service on the Emergency Planning Committee. John is not here tonight, but I think we'll give that to Deb. Deb, can you?
Yep.
Will you see him?
Yep.
And Deb, do you want to make the announcement about your...
Yeah, I think you all should have received an email from Steve recently.
Steve, your husband.
Steve, my husband.
Okay.
The city is doing the functional exercise disaster drill on Thursday evening, and the aldermen are invited to attend as observers, and you would just report to the back door at the police department, you know, back where they park, and I'm trying to remember if there's a buzzer back there or not, is there a buzzer back there?
At the back door?
Yeah, I know Steve was working on it. Anyway, somebody will let you in, so don't worry about that. At six o'clock.
Okay, thanks. We have another certificate of appreciation for Jeff Dyer, in recognition of his 10 years of service in the city of Wapaka. He works in our wastewater treatment plant, and Jeff is not here, so we'll make sure John gets that to him. Okay, we're on to the South Park Phase One presentation, and we have a couple of individuals from MSA here that are trying to give us a presentation. I'll turn it over to Henry and...
While the folks get set up, we have Mike Lau, who's the project manager with MSA Professional Services, and Carter Arnt, who's their architect. Our purpose is, we're at a stage where we're getting ready to complete final design documents and get the project out for bid, and wanted to make sure council had an opportunity to look at and comment on the project at this point in time. We have, I see some folks in the audience, thank you for coming. We invited some representatives from various groups that were involved back in '09 when we did the initial master plan with East Central Regional Planning Commission, and so, again, as people that were, have a vested interest in the project, want to make sure that we exposed those folks to where we're at, too. I think this is meant to kind of be an open discussion, Carter, you know, we'll make some brief presentation and then open it up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Again, my name is Mike Lau, and with me again is Carter Arnt. We're here to present to you a first look at some exciting proposed improvements at this South Park. We're intending to move towards construction, as Henry indicated, sometime this fall, with completion of Phase One of this improvement project, complete by next spring, early next spring. The main focus of this phase is really some improvements related to a new restroom shelter building, which will be kind of the focal point of the park, and I'm going to have Carter kind of walk us through the site plan, and then he'll give you some 3D images of what we're proposing for the pavilion. Carter, go ahead.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, everyone, good to be here. What you have before you on the screen is just an image of the existing park, which I'm sure everybody's pretty familiar with, just to talk a little bit about context of the project that's being proposed. Currently, South Park with its parking lot and one-way access that flows into the park, with the northerly part of the park with the fountain, to the southerly part with the shelter, which was recently removed, the existing shelter, to the bathhouse down to the beach. The context of this project was basically to master plan the park itself as far as improvements go, and construct in this first phase a replacement shelter that's going to replace the shelter that previously existed. And the site for that shelter is proposed right in the similar location to the existing with some improved orientations. The proposed plan is before you right here, and it's a phased approach, and this phase is going to focus on the shelter building itself, but just to explain a little more about the context, what this plan shows is the, is future Phase Two parking work, parking lot work that's going to take place, but the proposed location for the new building is such that it's going to be an open-air pavilion that's going to face right down to Shadow Lake, and it's going to have a restroom core and a support kitchen, kind of warming, preparation area in the center to serve the pavilion. So, with the work, there's going to be a, some new sewer and water work to feed the, and deal with some problematic lines that you have there now, and there's going to be a new drop-off lane, so they can more effectively deal with dropping off the kids and picking them up from the swimming, from the beach. And with that, there's some reconfiguration of the playground area, some stormwater provisions that are going to collect the water that drains off the parking lot and properly accommodates it and then distributes it to the lake, and then the, I don't know, not my mic that's making that noise, is it?
I think he's turning it a little bit.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry about that. The pavilion that's proposed then orient itself to the lake with some, a new access route that leads into the park, with the existing restroom building remaining, and some new terraces that lead down to the park. The question was, what are these things down that are south of the pavilion? Just with the zoomed-in image, you can see a little better. Basically, the open-air shelter is right here, a restroom core is right behind it. These areas are basically tiered terraces that lead down to the lake itself, so there's a series of patios, let's say, hopefully we've been calling them the lakeside terrace, and they basically step down in a tiered manner, about 30 inches per step, about the height of a desk or so, that tier down, so basically, it basically maximizes the area for gathering that the shelter can accommodate and provide for, in quite a beautiful setting overlooking the lake. The building itself, seen in this computer model, you can start to see what the building looks like in three dimension, and this gives you a better idea. You can see those lakeside terrace areas that I was describing out in front, so basically the view as you come into the park, you'd come in and you approach the building, and you see what is the open-air portion of the pavilion, you see the pavilion as it faces the parking lot, and the central restroom core that's on the pavilion. Oops, there we go. And then you can see that basically the view through the pavilion down to the lake, and I'm just going to fly around a little bit here with some preset images, but the idea was to create a pavilion that felt like a city pavilion, so it was unique in its characteristics to kind of represent Wapaka, but yet it's going to have auxiliary restroom areas in the center, and we'll just make a nice proud statement down towards the lake, and if you don't get seasick as I fly around here, you can, the images probably tell a lot of the story. You can see up inside the pavilion. In the center, there's a serving window and built-in serving counter, so when people are using the pavilion, they actually can, you know, plug in their Nesko's and their other devices for cooking and, or the serving food and warming it. And there you get a sense of the overall building in more of a rendered format, but associated with the project, of course, is our schedule and our budget that we're working on, and the construction costs, this project was funded in part by a grant from the DNR, and before you hear are the construction cost estimates. I don't know, Henry, if you want to talk anymore about the global budget associated with the grant, but our numbers associated with the building are before you here, and there's been a little bit of a shift in regard to, there's a single pot of money that has been awarded, but there's been an emphasis on trying to make the pavilion the best it can be at this time, because it's better than trying to expand it later. So, the building is estimated at about $540,000. The site infrastructure with the drop-off lane, new sidewalks, the lakeside terrace, and the new utilities that are going to serve the building are around $200,000, and gives you a bid package of about $760,000. We'll also be bidding out the site utilities that are listed in item D as $139,000, and so we'll get a bid price on that as well, and the city may or may not perform that work depending on the scenario for the pricing, how it comes in, and it puts a grand total of the project around $900,000, as estimated now. Now, Henry, did you want to talk at all of the grant topic?
Yeah, we have a grant award of right at $700,000, a project of $700,000. The grant's going to pay half of that, and our donors have contributed $230,000. The balance is in the form of a land donation, and then we have about $50,000 in in-kind material and staff time that's included. Now, again, this is, you know, it's a conservative estimate, we don't know exactly where everything's going to shake out when the bidding happens. The team, and there was six or seven of us at the staff level involved, looked at ways to, you know, perhaps reduce the project costs, you know, because the budget's a reality that we got to deal with, and there's some alternatives here. I think they told about $50,000 in deducts that we're estimating, but there's things that until we get the bids back, we don't know, you know, and I have to make some, have some conversations with DNR, because, you know, there's a possibility that the city will exceed its $50,000 in in-kind materials and labor, and how do we get credit for that? And those kind of issues we'll have to work through. I don't want to speak for the group, only myself, I think the idea is we're building something that's going to try to, it's got to last 40 years, and it does, will be the centerpiece. There's elements of this project that, you know, the reality of the budget is going to allow, you know, just not allow us to do. One main point is the playground. In the grant, I think we had a budget of about $60,000 for playground. Now, the old playground can stay, and a point was made earlier today, you're congregating all these people, and there's no place for the kids to burn off some energy. We will keep that existing playground, but we are investigating other ways to make that playground happen with this project, and I think there's some exciting opportunities to, you know, for that. Another element that, again, in the master plan of which we included in the grant application was that fishing pier down by Bowersocks Park, if you remember. Well, there's another grant program available that funds fishing piers, so we're going to pursue that element of the project through another grant. We did give a donor presentation, and, you know, there were comments made that they would like to see us, you know, really, you know, build the ultimate project, and that there might be some additional help from donors to make this happen. Another exciting thing, Erin did prepare a grant for Phase Two. I think we had hoped to be able to do the parking lot improvements with this project, and determined that let's go after another grant with the DNR to do that phase, and again, like last year, we knew right after Labor Day that we got this grant, but we didn't get it officially awarded until, I think it was April of this year. So, we're going to know in the fall kind of where our standing is on that parking lot What else? And again, we, with Mike's help and Carter's help, and actually, you know, John has had a lot of experience with construction projects, there's ways we can put the bid document together to, when you get unit pricing, that we might, you know, maybe, you know, we want to do all the patios at once for constructability, but perhaps we just can't do all of them, you know? So, those are the things we'll have to, you know, make some decisions on when the bids come back in. Did you, you want to discuss the timeline? Yeah, there you go, you read my mind.
Relative to the schedule, actually, we're in the thick of things relative to developing the construction documents for the project right now, so we're basically on schedule to have the plans ready to release for bidding on July 11, and having the bid opening approximately August 1, and ultimately, some of these dates are slightly adjusted in what committees there are that are meeting, and we went through our earlier meeting today, but I think there's going to be a park and rec committee meeting on August 8, and that's the meeting where they will, you know, take some committee-level action on the bids, and then there is a council meeting on August 20, is where this will come before the council for action after it bids out. The desired goal, or the goal that the project is on for schedule is relative to basically starting construction this fall and being complete in the spring, with the idea that the park can be activated for use as the warm weather approaches. So, basically, by this time next year, the building would be done, and you could be using it, so that's the anticipated schedule. And with that, I don't know if there's any other questions of me relative to the project and what was described here?
Anybody that has questions in the audience, like you... Council members? Questions? Here comes Jackie, she can't resist.
Let Peg go here first, and then we'll let you go, Jackie.
I'm just wondering, as I'm looking at this image, where is the existing stairwell that leads down to the park?
On the south side of the bathrooms.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, all right.
Right, right over there.
So, our project at this time isn't going to be impacting that stairway, it's going to stay there. The existing restroom is going to stay as well, maybe in time it might see a renovation that kind of aesthetically improves it a little bit to match the new pavilion building.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Okay, I just want to know what kind of construction is going to be started this summer in the parking lot or the park? I was told that we might have some construction in the parking lot.
Sure. Relative to, this summer, there won't be any construction starting in the parking lot?
No, it's going to start, you know, the triathlon was a concern, Jackie, so I think, you know, the schedule just kind of worked out that way. I think initially, we thought it would start before the triathlon.
Okay.
But I think the schedule's going to work out that that's, it won't impact it, and I think we always close the beach like that weekend of the triathlon, right?
No.
Will you keep it open?
We're supposed to close around Labor Day weekend, but it depends on how many gardens I lose.
Okay.
We might be closed a couple of days, but last year, we closed a couple of days before, so you think the construction would be like September, so right after we close? Okay, great, thank you.
Erin?
I would just like to kind of make a point here to maybe give everyone a better idea of where this is going to lay as to what you're used to right now. I don't know if, Carter, I'm not sure if you...
I'm using my...
Yeah, sure. If you mentioned, this, where you see the show... If you mentioned, this, where you see the shelter, or the proposed shelter here, that access road right now, the way you're used to it basically runs right through the middle of this. This access road would be moved with this drop-off lane here to go around. And this, you know, this would be more on top of the hill. So, you know, if you're thinking, and the way I was thinking of it before I saw the site plan is, you know, how much room do we have on that side of the road down the hill? And, you know, just so you're aware that this whole access road has been moved and it is being constructed on top of the hill there, so.
Aaron, can you address, I mean, are we losing trees because of this? Like that?
Yes, Jack, we will use, we will lose some trees in the process. Not sure how many to this point. Like Henry mentioned and Carter mentioned, we're really waiting for the bids to come back and not even sure, you know, if we're going to complete all three of those terrace areas or just one, or what we can do there. So that'll obviously affect that as well.
You can see on this drawing, they're showing approximately one, two, three, four, five, you know, six trees right around the building. Tried to place it in a way that we minimize the tree disruption, but, and there's still nice stand of trees all around it. And there'll be trees in the future to replace the ones that get removed.
Well, the very big tree in the parking lot, basically, you know, how the triathlon goes around it, that will need to come down. But it is, you know, it's, yeah, the 36 inch, it, you know, Roger has stated that needs to come down.
Is the parking lot actually going to be about the same size as it currently is, or is it enlarged?
The parking lot's going to pretty much be the same as it is. They're not doing a lot of work to enlarge it. They're improving the drive-in lane that comes into the park by widening a little bit, taking an island out that's right there. Otherwise, the parking would be striped just like it is now. And there's a new drop-off lane that's going to go there along the south edge of it, but the parking lot's going to stay unchanged. What you're seeing in this drawing is a reorientation of the parking stalls. That's Phase Two. So that would, when the parking gets expanded to the north and basically working out an improved parking stall layout, they gain quite a few stalls and also a lot safer parking lot and lots better to connect the north and south half of the park because it no longer runs perpendicular to it, but parallel to it.
Carter, show them the exact area that is proposed for expansion.
Sure.
So that they get a feel for that.
So relative to, let me just zoom in a nice way. So this line right here is the existing edge of the existing parking lot, which will remain unchanged as part of this project. Phase Two would basically expand this to create this driveline, create this parking, create parking along the east edge, and reorientate the parking, north and south orientation.
Okay. And then I have another question. In the pavilion in the kitchen area?
Mm-hmm.
Will that also have running water, or is it just going to be electrical?
They can just use the site plan, floor plan to depict it, but I think it can explain it. There's just, there's going to be counter space in there, and there's going to be a sink. And there's going to be a fridge and a freezer.
Okay.
But there's not going to be food preparation areas, no commercial kitchens, hoods, or anything else. So a lot of open counter space, so people can stage their events. You can come there and spread your food out and get it ready to serve.
Perfect. And how many square feet actually is that?
The enclosed portion of the building's about 800 square feet. The overall pavilion is approaching 5,000 square feet if you count the amount of area under roof.
Okay. And do the plans also accommodate for seating in that pavilion? I mean, will there be new picnic tables or benches or?
Well, the budget numbers right now aren't caring for the new picnic tables. I mean, they don't have the money in there for the new picnic tables, but I know that in time, there's going to be new picnic tables, I believe, but, so, but it's not being bid out at this time, yet.
Carter, you want to just talk about the accommodation of a number of people that we're anticipating, how we might stage different types of size events?
Sure. The pavilion itself is, has wings on it, as we've been referring to them. So basically, this was by design because the idea of having the pavilion be able to be used all in its entirety at once, or be able to use one half and the other half, was a desire of the design. So the resultant layout, you know, basically gave us a winged plan that allows, seats about 100, up to 140 in each wing, basically, at picnic tables and tables and chairs. So you can, you can get a large, over 200-person event under roof here, let alone all the exterior uncovered areas that don't have roof over top of them. You can gain even more seating at those.
Any electricity in that pavilion besides the kitchen, or is it electrical just in the kitchen?
Certainly. There'll be, there'll be lighting on the pavilion that'd be security lighting for the evening, but then there'll be convenience outlets around the restroom core, but also at these, there's masonry piers around the perimeter, so there's outlets at those as well. There was talk of accommodating a barbecue area for your annual barbecue that happens at the park. And one of the locations we're looking at possibly doing that is in this area. So if they bring a trailer with large barbecuers, and we'll put plenty of power off of these pillars here to power that. And that's a kind of a component that's in the works and in discussion just as we speak. But trying to accommodate that ongoing event and even others that might come to the park and want to, you know, bring a larger grilling device. Or there'll be some smaller grills there potentially for just regular park users that want to grill something at the pavilion.
I just have a couple of questions. The serving table counter things?
Mm-hmm.
Do, can people get behind them, like, to put food out, or is it all worked from in front of them?
Well, there's, there's going to be two types. One's going to be a service window that's approximately seven feet. And now, somebody can be behind that. But the other ones are basically more for staging of food. There actually is a slight design revision that we're going to do where the counter's going to come and turn and connect with these pillars. So you'll get some slight peninsula serving area, but then the rest is along the wall where there'll be power and outlets along there.
Oh, okay.
So it'll be more of like a self-serve sort of line, not necessarily fill your plate, you know, have somebody else fill your plate as you go kind of line.
That's kind of inconvenient for adding food when you have a big party, because you have to add it from the outside, is what I'm hearing you say.
Right. And you could use freestanding tables, you know, for that.
Right.
To accommodate that, we'd have to basically build freestanding tables, which would be kind of difficult.
Okay.
So we put the service lines where we could get power for Nesko's and things. And it will be slightly, you know, once we get the little peninsulas added at each end that'll connect that counter to that pillar, you will have better service going on there for that, like that.
The other concern that I'm kind of like overarching the whole project is looking for sustainability and energy efficiency, whether solar is some kind of way to make some of the energy more efficient or what. But that's the one question that I'm not hearing built into the plan, any kind of plans for sustainability and long-term efficiencies.
Sure, I can speak to that a little bit. Relative to sustainability in buildings, primarily the use of heating and cooling in buildings is by far the mass, the vast majority of what goes into the energy usage of a building. In this case, this is a seasonal building, so there won't be any heating or cooling. The lighting that we have under the pavilion is all LED lighting. The lighting inside the restrooms are fluorescent, so they are energy-efficient lighting. So the electrical devices we do have that run will be energy-efficient. There'll be occupancy sensors in the restrooms, you know, so they'll turn off when nobody's in there. So that'll save energy. And the use of materials itself, the structure is primarily steel, which is mostly recycled. The concrete has fly ash in it, which is recycled. So there's sustainability built into some of the materials that are being used as well. The restroom itself is daylight. There's windows on, in the restrooms to allow natural daylight in there.
Oh, okay.
So that helps the daylighting. There, currently, there isn't anything in the works for any sort of photovoltaics for electrical generation. The energy usage of the building is pretty small, and that would be a decision the city would have to encourage if they wanted to do it because there wouldn't be an economical payback to do it. Not that it's not valid to do if somebody so chooses, but right now, it's not in the plans.
All right. One more.
I have one question. Sorry. I don't have change of this. What's going on with the canal right now? We got black plastic up at the beach of the canal.
I can answer that. Yeah, we, actually, Carol, I've been talking with Carol, and they were concerned with sand and wind blowing the sand into the canal. You know, every now and then. I think they dredged it, how many years ago, Carol?
It's.
Eight, seven, eight years.
Okay. And we're trying to avoid a scenario where we have to do that again. So basically, that silt fence is just there to prevent the sand from blowing over into the canal.
So they're not dredging the canal?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Looking forward to the project. This is a time for public input. If we have any individuals that are in the audience that would like to speak to us on items that are not on our agenda tonight, this is your opportunity to do that. Please give your name, step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. If there's anybody that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item. If not, we'll move on to the department announcements reports, and we're going to start with our city treasurer, Jean Peterson.
No new projects in my office, and all the budgets look really good right now, so far this year.
Thanks, Jean. Okay, thanks. Let's go to the library. Peg Barrington, please.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Well, we're welcoming lots of residents and visitors into the library this summer. And just a reminder that we do have free Wi-Fi, so if you need to connect with your device, just come into the library. And if you need any assistance, there's always somebody at the desk that can help you. We have over 350 kids and teens signed up for the summer reading program. And the kids can read to dogs. There are family films. We have Wednesday workshops. There's Storytime, baby gardening and baby garden and special programming. That's all going on in the children's department. We encourage you to come down and see it or to go online and find out what those programs are all about. There's still registration. It's not too late to register and get your reading in for the summer. In the teens, their teen room, there's daily programming for our teens. We encourage you to come at 1:00 in the afternoon and either enjoy a Read Anything Cafe or creative workshop, films, and a manga club and a gaming club. So there's all kinds of things going on for teens, and they're really enjoying their summer this year. We still have opportunities for people who have e-readers, or you want to download audiobooks to your device, come in. We can give you some one-on-one instruction on that. Give us a call and make an appointment. We encourage that. Our budget is on track for the year, and we're looking forward to an adult summer reading program starting in August.
Thanks, Peg. Any questions? Thank you. Brennan?
I'm Mayor Smith. Just a couple of updates, other than this is my third week on the job, so I'm still taking time to get everything settled into the office and my arms around everything. But I've spent a lot of time with Henry within the last couple of weeks and getting a better understanding of the community, which has definitely been exciting. Couple of development projects that we're working on right now, one of them being Mr. Wayne McKay out at Apple Tree Lane, working on a potential building expansion for his manufacturing operation along with an office. We'll be probably speaking with him again early next week. Another project out in the East Gateway that I'm working with Henry and John right now on, potential sewer extension, but attracting some new development out in the East Gateway area could open up the potential for another 30 acres of development. Have an application in my office right now for a potential new cell phone tower over at the Packer County Building. Have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to discuss what options we have to possibly eliminate that tower and have Verizon co-locate within some existing structures within the area. Those are the main projects right now. We do have Tom Baron, who was your interim planner, coming in for about two more weeks until the end of June, just to help me transition a little bit more into the position here and work with me a little bit on getting some ideas out on paper and some action plans and how to move forward with economic development within the community and looking at some of the existing planning initiatives that we need to take care of within the next six months or so.
Sounds great. Thanks, Brennan. All right, Director Public Works, John Edelbeck.
Okay, Bailey Street project was worked on, completed, and opened. Project went well, worked well with the private utilities. It was a nice project. We still have some pavement striping, a few minor items to go out there, but a very successful project for us. State Street, our underground work has been completed. Storm sewer work was completed by city crews, the reconstruction of a number of storm sewer inlets. The county, it's, this is, again, a joint project with the county. The county was, is handling the pavement work out there. They've repaired the sub base, placed down crushed agriculture material, and we're getting ready now for concrete. So we're hoping by the end of this week or early next week, we'll have the concrete subcontractor in, and we'll start forming and pouring curb and gutter and repairing all the sidewalk and driveway aprons. So it's starting to look like a road again, so that's a good thing. That project has gone very well also, good coordination with the county, good coordination with the general and the subs, and again, the private utilities have worked well with us on that project. You'll see on the south end of the project, some of that, some of the pavement was put in in concrete. Again, that's County Highway E. The county, if you're familiar with that area, the pavement has pushed over time with truck traffic, trucks stopping on that section of road, but actually pushed the asphalt and hump it. That's been repaved probably two or three times since I've been here over the years. So they decided to go with concrete pavement from the north end of the entrance to the rec center up, the pavement section that's in there. The last pour that they had, they hired a subcontractor. There were some problems with the last section that was poured. It was split into four sections. So you'll probably see some more work out there before that road is open, some of the repair on that concrete pavement. But beside that, like I said, we're getting ready and are, will be working with the concrete subcontractor to get that curb and gutter and sidewalk work done shortly. Sanitary manhole work, storm sewer inlet work's being done around the city. You might, you might have seen crews. Some of the work is being done by city staff, others by a contractor. We're doing some annual routine sanitary manhole rehab. It's gone very well. We're cleaning sanitary sewer mains around town. You see the large Vector truck doing that. We have performed some pavement striping work and some preparation for Strawberry Festival downtown. We do have more pavement work to go, and we'll be doing some of that either with our own crews, or we contract with Portage County and their pavement striper, their large vehicle. And miscellaneous concrete work was done around the city, just a lot of different things going on right now with our staff. The old Quick Trick building was rehabbed by a number of different departments actually in getting that ready, and it was renter occupied by the end of May. The digister cover is an item that we've been working on, the project at the treatment plant, and you'll hear about that under Board of Public Works. Been working with the South Park project, that we think that's going along very well. East Central Wisconsin and, East Central Wisconsin Regional Plan Commission and the UW Extension Office has been working with staff on a pedestrian bike plan. And that's going to be reviewed tomorrow and moved forward for discussion as well. A few other items of interest on page 39 of the report. As of 5/31, 41% of the budget year has elapsed. So with the 41%, our street division expenses are at 39%. Our water division expenses are at 38%. And our sewer division expenses are at 26%. And lastly, our snow and ice control budget. That's all, Mayor.
Thanks, John. Any comments, questions? Parks and Rec Director, Aaron Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. As you guys all just saw, we're continuing to work on the South Park project and I'd like to thank everyone that's been involved. John has obviously been a huge help, Henry, Roger Hanson, and Russ Montgomery. And then I think the MSA has come up with a very quality shelter and a great project and it'll be fun moving forward with that. We also have some programs starting up. We have soccer camps, this is a new program run by the British Semi-Pro Challenger Sports, and that is July 29th through August 2nd. They ran a mini-kickers program for two to four-year-olds, if you recall, in the spring, so they're coming back. We do have a youth nature activity class, that's also a new program, and that's starting here in early July. We have a regular soccer program, youth soccer that carries about 400 kids. Swimming lessons started this week, which Jackie and her lifeguards do a fantastic job on. And the beach is open and hopefully we can, you can get down there. We have finally a couple of nice days this week, it looks like rain this weekend, so get down there before that. Gymnastics just ended, we are looking to start another session in July, and that is anywhere between two and 12 years old. We have basketball camps running right now and senior shuffleboard is Tuesdays and Thursdays if anyone's interested in that. A lot of our focus is on the weekends here in the summer months. We do have tournaments and events almost every, every weekend here from June 1st, dating back to June 1st and moving throughout the summer. We did have a 12-team girls softball tournament, this was a new tournament this year, that was on June 1st. We had a 25-team boys' little league tournament, that was June 8th. June 15th, we had a 13, this was this last weekend, 13-team men's softball tournament. This coming weekend, we have a 32-team boys' baseball tournament. We have a 5K run on June 29th at Swan Park. We have a 31-team, which is our city league team, our in-house teams, and that is July 8th through the 13th, so that's run all week and into the weekend. And then July 20th, this is also a new thing, we're having, we're hosting the Regional Legion, American Legion Baseball Tournament, and hopefully that runs well. We're gonna try to put on a good show because if we do in the fall, we get to make a presentation to the state board to possibly host a state tournament here in Wapaka. And then in August, we move into the Foundry Picnic, triathlon, obviously, and some of those events. So, I do wanna mention that out of these, five of these seven events on the weekends that I just mentioned, our organizations that give back to the park, they did, the girls softball and boys' baseball gave $20,000, you know, this last year improvements, to couple that with the $5,000 the Foundry gave, and we have some nice things going on there. So, it's great to have events and teams and people coming into town spending money, but it's also great when that money is going to these organizations that help the parks. So, we appreciate all of that. I just wanna give a quick update on the school building. Not much movement. We have had, Rick has contacted Silvermist, you might have noticed the flowers look a little nicer in front there. And we have had an architect come through the building and that's been working with Mr. Johnson and has a couple of proposals, mainly adding on locker room bathroom area to accommodate that health club. But that will not go into place, obviously, until the zoning, so. And that is about it, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Pension and for the chief, we have Sergeant Mario Gosefa. Mario?
Thanks, Mayor. We had two new hires, Jeremy Mulray and Clint Schrader, and I was actually fortunate to...
Clint Schrader?
Yeah. To bring him along tonight. For those of you that, I know some of you met Clint, Officer Schrader has graduated from Clintonville High School. He has a degree in criminal justice from Fox Valley Technical College. He has some experience with law enforcement, he's worked at Manawa, the city of Manawa, Marion, and Clintonville. He also worked for the Wapaka County Sheriff's Office for Snowmobile Patrol. Both are our new hires that we hired last month have completed Phase 1 and they're both now in Phase 2. Everyone kind of welcomed Clint. There also was, last month, there was some charges filed against two individuals, this case is currently under investigation for the methamphetamine labs that were found in the city of Wapaka. We have, we do have arrest warrants for a third individual out there, but I guess I would hazard to offer too many comments on that. And the chief did report that, like Mr. Edelbeck said, that 41% of the fiscal year has elapsed and we are at 39% of our current budget. That's all.
Thank you. Thanks, Mario. All right, then we have Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna be on the midst of budget season again real soon. I would anticipate working with the mayor and having a calendar presented sometime next month. I think the new meeting format will really facilitate the budget process, I believe. So, looking forward to that. On the old Quick Trick building, there are a few things that still need to be done. We did get the major components done. We do have to landscape the little area, take down the existing sign and work with the tenant to get a new sign put up. Now, that's at his cost. And I guess, I'd just like to comment about how versatile John's crews are. I mean, these guys can do everything from soup to nuts and I tell ya, you know, as we work through that South Park project, it's really exciting, but we're gonna have to get really creative to make that thing happen as the way we envision it. And I just, it's just so nice to know that our troops have some capabilities to get this stuff done, so I'd like to recognize them. Aaron's been playing a fairly big part in our wellness program and I'd like to say thanks to him too because he's trying to do this in the midst of all these tournaments as well as being down basically a programmer, so, you know, he's busting it, so thank you. There's one good thing to report, you know, we're into our wellness program and our biometric score actually got better as a group, and that's good because we had three extra bodies. So statistically, that's a good thing, we were told by Theta Care that's been working with us. We have had our insurance consultant in just to try to understand some of the effects of Obamacare, everybody knows it is that. And, you know, we're getting to understand that. WEAT Trust has been, let me back up, our broker has worked with some school districts that use WEAT Trust as an insurer, and they have yet to propose a double-digit premium increase, so that's, that's pretty good. Will that happen with us? I, you know, you know, I don't know, but I was somewhat encouraged by that. And with WEAT Trust, they are budgeting about a half a percent of a premium increase to kind of deal with the new regulations around healthcare. As an insurance company, I wanna thank the council for accepting the recommendation to move to them because I think our employees appreciate them. And we've got a really good third-party administrator that's handling our claims and our FSA program, so I, you know, I think a lot of that is working really well for us. And then finally, I guess, you know, Mayor and City Attorney Hart, I didn't put it on the agenda, but I guess I was looking to see if there was some consensus for staff as well as John Hart to move forward with making the change to this new meeting format because we're gonna need to get some ordinances. And we probably got a few other anomalies we've gotta address in going to this format. So, I don't know if it's appropriate, if, if I could, you know, Mayor, if there's a consensus, then, you know, in the next month, we, we would work to bring these ordinances forward if, if you like it, or do you wanna kick the tires for another month? It's, you know...
I, I think this is working well, I'd like to continue it.
I agree.
I see that as a consensus, Mr. Mayor?
I guess.
All right, well, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, good. Thanks, Henry. Thanks, staff, for the reports. Let's move on to action items then. The first one under action items tonight is City Planning Commission. We have ordinance number...
I'm throwing it.
Oh, sorry. Ordinance number 0613. This is an ordinance of men to the city of Wapaka, the Year 2030 Comprehensive Plan. It's the first reading. We did have a public hearing earlier, we did not have any, we had no, no speakers at the, besides staff that was at that meeting. This was a unanimous vote in favor of this at the City Planning Commission, so you will see this on the consent agenda at our next meeting, which will be the July 2nd, is that right?
Yes.
July 2nd meeting. Okay, the last two items, I'm gonna have Brennan take those first.
All right, the first one in your packet is a certified survey map for 415 and 515 School Street. This is in regards to the city of Wapaka purchasing the property for expansion of the rec center. Everything does meet, the ordinances are currently in place. The only condition that we have that came out of the Plan Commission was that the CSM is not signed by Mayor Smith until we have the cross-axis easements agreed upon between the school district and the city of Wapaka. Are there any questions?
If not, we would be looking for a motion to approve this CSM?
I'll make a motion to approve the CSM for the Wapaka School District on School Street with the conditions as noted.
Second? Motion by Shambro, second by Keeland. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Dave Shambro?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Scott Proczadzki?
Aye.
And John Lockwood?
Aye.
And Paul Hagan is absent, so nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, second item is a certified survey map located at 1407 Evans Street. Due to the city of Wapaka ordinances, the applicant is required in a certified survey map to allow the construction of another accessory garage structure on an adjacent parcel. The ordinances in the city of Wapaka allow an accessory structure without a principal structure if the lot is adjacent to the homestead, so the applicant is splitting his existing land into two lots and future Lot 2 will have additional garage structure on the property. Are there any questions?
If not, we'd be looking for a motion?
I'll move for approval of the certified survey map at 1407 Berlin Street.
Second.
We have a motion by Olson and a second by Fenske that we approve this certified survey map for 1407 Berlin Street for Chad Hurt. Any discussion? We did find out at the city planning, which is kind of interesting, that they are gonna put up a structure on a separate lot here and we do not allow, um, do you wanna explain that a little bit?
Typically, most municipalities will not allow an accessory structure without a principal structure, i.e. a house on the property. However, there's a unique, I'll say amendment within the Wapaka Code of Ordnances that allow accessory structure as long as the lot is adjacent to where the principal structure is. So, in this case, again, the applicant already has a larger parcel land, he's dividing it into two, and because Lot 2 is adjacent to Lot 1, he's allowed to build an accessory structure on that property. We don't have anything in, in place currently that would, you know, if he does split the land, the lot becomes non-conformant at that time because it does not have a principal structure and the owner's not the same either at that time. So, something that came up during the Plan Commission that during review of the general Code of Ordnances for planning and development, we may have to take a look at in the future for amendment.
Okay, good. Thanks, Brennan, for that. All right, you ready to vote? Sandy will call the roll.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Scott Proczadzki?
Aye.
Dave Shambro?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And John Lockwood?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Brennan. Moving on to the Judiciary Committee, we have License Report Number 1177. This is a application for a temporary Class B, Class, Class B license for the Knights of Columbus for their annual July 4th chicken barbecue, which is held at South Park. I don't know if we have anybody from Knights here tonight? Yes, sir. You wanna just step up to the podium, please? Give your name.
Jim Macholsky.
Hey, Jim. Anything you wanna add? I mean, it's gonna be a little bit different this year, obviously, for you there.
Yes, it will, but it should work fine for us, you know, we've got some things, planning with the tents and so forth, so, so it should work well.
Okay, so your plan is to bring in a tent for a structure?
Yes, mhm, and we'll bring in our portable type grills type of thing too, so, so we should have that covered.
Great, great. Looking forward to it.
Yes, weather-wise, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Any questions of Jim? Mario, I'm assuming the, the chief and you, your department has had a look at this, it's a little different.
I haven't seen it, but I'm sure the chief has, as far as meeting the requirements for the application?
Yeah.
I haven't seen it.
Okay, okay. Let's check with the chief to just make sure, but go with that.
We may have to maybe fence in your, where you're gonna serve alcohol, so you're norm, yeah, you did that every year anyways, yeah, sure.
I'll make a motion, we approve License Report Number 1177, subject to Tim Go, taking a look at it, making sure everything's okay.
Second?
Here we have a motion with one addition by Shambro, second by Lockwood, to approve License Report Number 1177. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, we have a request from Foundations for Living Incorporated to use three parking stalls along City Hall Square, East Union Street to operate a root beer float concession during the Friday band, city band concerts. Anybody from...
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Sandra Coyle with Foundations for Living. We're looking to City Park for the city band concert, I was there last Friday. We always have a wonderful turnout, there was over probably 150 people ranging from ages 20 to 80. And it's an awesome time, but as a family member, it's always hard to get there by 7:00 and there's never any concessions. We do hit up Quick Trick, you see a lot of Quick Trick, you see a lot of Little Caesars. We would like to make, you know, available a root beer wagon that we have from a friend that we could serve popcorn, root beer, and root beer floats and do it for, I think we had four dates picked from, starting maybe this Friday, through about the middle of July when the band concerts are almost over. We'd like permission to be able to set up and sell root beer floats and popcorn.
Okay, and I'm assuming the clerk's office has had a chance to look at this?
Yes, sir, and I did email Rob and I, you know, we never had the specific conversation of where she wanted it.
That's right.
So, I don't think, given the size of that trailer, you wanna haul that up on the grounds, so parking it in some stalls on, on, on East Union Street seem to make sense. You're gonna need power.
Yes, sir.
So, what we're gonna probably do is have to run a cord or something to get it to you.
Okay, is that usually a bandstand?
Pardon?
It's a bandstand?
Yeah, or actually, we could probably go through my window, my office, if we have to.
Okay, and then what time?
But we'll make it work.
What time, sir, would we be allowed to set up?
Not on that side of the building. There's one, there's some right in the front, and actually Peg, there's some on the north side of the building, but none on the, on the south side. You probably wanna cone that off, um, yeah, I don't know, I mean, on a Fri, you probably wanna cone that off at 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon to make sure you've got some stalls there.
Okay. Yeah, because we need a little bit of time too to ice the root beer and get the freezer iced up, so if we could pull it in at that time?
Is that enough time for you?
Uh, yeah, because it takes about two hours, two to three hours to get all that up and going, iced and ready. So, would I just stop by your office and talk with you on Friday, approved?
Yeah, we'll, we'll make that happen, assuming it gets approved, yeah. Yeah, we'll just probably...
So would I just stop by your office and talk with you on Friday, approved?
Yeah, we'll make that happen, assuming it gets approved, yeah. Yeah, we'll just probably stage some cones in the foyer of the building or something, in the side, our side entrance, and have them ready for you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
In the request, it says June 21st, 28th, July 5th. You said four days, I think, and on the request, it shows three.
For three, yes. Whatever the dates were listed, I do have the wagon for those dates.
But are you requesting four or three?
Uh, just those three.
Okay. Motion, anybody?
I'll make a motion, we approve the request for the three days.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that the request from Foundations for Living Incorporated be approved to set up a root beer float concession for the three dates, 21st, 28th, June 21st, June 28th, and July 5th. Any discussion?
I do have a question. Is this something that happens, or is this unprecedented? I mean, if other organizations were to be making the same request, would we allow more than one to occupy stalls?
Well, first of all, we would make sure that they're a nonprofit organization.
Right, understand.
That's using that. This is not unprecedented. I mean, we have done this in the past. Whether we have two, more than one, that does it at one time, I can't remember if we have, although I don't see why we wouldn't allow it, right? I mean, I'm just speaking all alone by myself here, but... The International Exchange Committee tried root beer floats, but the ice cream melted all the time, because we didn't have a wagon, a trailer. So, yeah, I mean, if there are other organizations that would like to try something like that. It is a great crowd down there, there's no doubt.
Yes.
Take advantage of it, right? Anybody else? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, let's move on to, good luck. Move on to the Board of Public Works. John?
Okay, Mayor, we have a few items here. The first item is found on page 108. 2013 pavement slag seal bid review and contract award. We did solicit bids, and we received two. Farner Asphalt Sealers from Kakona and Scott Construction from Lake Delton. We have worked with both of these firms. We are targeting Joanne Lane Covered Bridge Road, Furman Drive, and Harbor Drive this year for that work. Both firms, as I stated, we've worked with and have done a good job for us. We're recommending the written quote submitted by Farner Asphalt Sealers of $24,962. This is the quick drying slag seal that we've used successfully throughout the city, and we would need action on that tonight.
Okay, we're looking for a motion, then?
I'll make a motion, we approve the slag bid from Farner's Asphalt Sealers for $24,962.
Second? Okay, we have a motion by Hackett, second by Keeland, that we approve the pavement of the 2013 pavement slag seal bid from Farner Asphalt Sealers for an amount not to exceed Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Dave Shamble?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item relates to anaerobic digester modification. This is a project that was bid out. We opened bids on June 13th. We did receive two bids. J.F. Ahern Company of Fond du Lac, $318,800, and Staub Construction of Marshfield, $392,000. This is gonna be funded out of the replacement fund, which is a sewer fund that we have with this project, with the equipment that we purchased about a month ago. The city's purchasing some of the equipment on their own directly, and engineering services, we will probably be around $400,000 total, maybe a little over that. We did budget over $500,000 for this project, $550,000. So we'll be well within budget on that. We do recommend J.F. Ahern Company at $318,800 for award tonight.
Again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve John's recommendation?
Make a motion, we approve the anaerobic digester modifications to J.F. Ahern Company for $318,800.
Second.
We have a motion by Lockwood, and a second by Pritchatsky. Do we have any discussion on this? If not, Sandy will call the roll?
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Paul Mayo? Dave Shamble?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, and then relating to American Asphalt of Wisconsin, which is the State Street, Bailey Street contractor, we have three pay requests and two change orders. The first pay request is pay request invoice number one. This is a progress payment. It's broken out into Bailey Street, State Street, and as well, within that, utility items as well. The Bailey Street section of this has been completed, and that is a final submittal for that. Pay request number two, it's a... Pay item on pay estimate number one, item Z999, was in error, so there actually was a deduct, and what they're showing in pay risk request number two is to balance that back out. And credit number three is... I'm sorry. It's a credit invoice number three, is actually a reduction in quantities. So in lieu of them just sending us a new pay request number one, they just corrected in pay request number two and pay request number three, if that makes sense. So the culmination of those three pay requests are the correct quantities to date. Change order number two relates to a minor item on Bailey Street, that the Falk's Brothers is a subcontractor for American Asphalt, as requested, which has justified some additional grading work that was done in the intersection, which is very minor. And then change order number three is, relates to three different items that are sewer and water related. There were some changes in the field. Once we dug up the mains, we actually reduced some work on a manhole, but that... So that reduced the manhole cost item, but it added a little bit more sanitary main. We took out a cross, a cross in a water main, which was a... Valves in four different directions, and we replaced that with a straight-through section of water main, so that's a $284 change. And then we added a service Y, sewer service Y. So that adds up to a $2154 in the change order number three. So with that, again, this is a partial pay request, we do need action on all those items tonight. By the way, there was no change order number one, so that was voided out, if you're, anybody was wondering.
Okay, you've heard the pay requests and change orders. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve all the pay requests and the change orders that John just went through.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Shamble. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll?
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
And Dave Shamble?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
So, Mayor?
Thanks, John. Let's move on to Parks and Recreation Board, then. We have a tractor with a cab that we are getting out here. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the handouts you guys received tonight. There is a little bit to explain here. If you look on the back of your handout, that's a little easier to look at as far as how the bids came in. We did get three bids. Swiderski out of Opaaca here, Service Motor Company out of Dale, and Reacher and Schnell out of Stevens Point, and you can see the prices and the make of tractor in those. I do want to explain that, as you can see, Swiderski came in as a low bid at $27,150. Unfortunately, they did not meet our height specification. We do currently store the tractor we have now, which is a Cub Cadet out at Swan Park, and it does get used primarily out there about two to three times a week, especially in the months from April to September. If, with that not meeting the height spec, we would not be able to store it in the garage out there. And I guess it's our feeling that it's the inefficiency of hauling it across town and the gas spent on that, it's just not a very practical thing to do for the next however many years we're gonna have it here. With that being said, I guess I would recommend that we approve the bid from Service Motor Company out of Dale, and that is for $29,778. Met all the specs, and as you can see, the last one from Reacher and Schnell did come in at $33,500. I do have to explain a few things here with our capital monies. We did, unfortunately, we have $20,000 budgeted for the tractor. As you can tell, that is about $9,778 off from what that bid came in at. I guess my plan would be to use remaining money and concrete work that we have left for this capital budget, and take half of that, which would be $3,750, and then use monies from the sale of the current Cub Cadet tractor that we have. We spoke to employees at Service Motor Company out of Dale there, and they told us that we can expect anywhere from $7,900 to $9,900 for the sale of that tractor. That would bring us in the range of $31,650 or $33,650 to be used for the purchase of this new tractor. Does anyone have any questions?
Aaron, would you be selling the old tractor on an auction, then?
On a surplus website that we use for a lot of our equipment.
And also, was Swiderski asked why, informed that they missed the spec on this, or they just didn't have a tractor that...
They just did not have a tractor. There was actually a tractor that I have not... It's a brand-new line Coyote that I had not, I wasn't familiar with, and actually, none of us were really prior to it, but, yeah, they just couldn't meet the spec.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we accept the bid for the new tractor from Service Motor Company in the amount of $29,778.
Second.
We have a motion by Shamble, second by Olson, that we approve the purchase of a Kubota tractor from Service Motor Company located out of Dale, Wisconsin, for an amount not to exceed $29,778, and use capital monies for this, plus the sale of the used Cub Cadet tractor. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll?
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Dave Shamble?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
And Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, let's move on to Personnel Committee, then. This is to set a pay scale for the water and wastewater certified operator Class 1, 2, 3, and 4 for 2013. Is this you, Henry, or John?
It's just me.
Okay, go ahead.
In the distribution on your desk this evening, there is a corrected memo. I'd like to thank Steve for alerting me to it. I can't even say it's transposed, if you look in there, the numbers aren't even that close, but anyways. The attachment kinda gives you an idea of what we're requesting here. When we had an active union, we would negotiate the pay scales, and we haven't really addressed these positions specifically, and it doesn't really create a problem until we get into the operator classes, because in the past, once they obtained their, you know, the next level, it was just an automatic pay increase, it was just handled administratively in accordance with the schedule in the labor agreement. Well, we don't have a labor agreement anymore. We have Ryan Giefer, who's just accomplished obtaining his operator Class 1 status, and I guess where I sat, we didn't really have an updated schedule, right? Because we haven't had an active contract for two years. So Tina went ahead and just showed the increases that council approved for other, all the non-law enforcement personnel the last two budgets, and that's what this scale reflects. And I guess the further request here is just to acknowledge that if a pay raise is given next year, 2014, that we would just automatically, you know, make these adjustments. And I fully expect Ryan will continue to pursue those certifications. He's aggressive. Yeah, he's gonna wanna get there as quick as possible. So we just wanna, you know, being able to administratively, you know, give him his pay raise when he's earned that credential. John in the packet, John is recommending, I don't know if you wanna say anything more beyond that in your memo, but this would put in place those schedules for both. Wastewater is what's prompting this, but we also have the certain, the certified levels in water as well. So I thought I'd just do them both. Okay. I think there's a question, Mayor?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ken.
I just have a question. This looks very different than the pay wage scale that we have for the rest of the city, where we have a minimum, a middle range and a maximum. I'm just wondering how this fits into that, which we have for the rest of the departments.
That's a great question, and that's another reason why we probably need to look organization-wide on our positions and how they are set. All I'm running off of is the labor agreement, that's what was agreed to, and just applied the percentages. I mean, that's a very, very legitimate question, but I mean, I can't, what else, what other basis do I have to, you know, do it? It was how we did it in the past, it doesn't mean we have to. That's how the, I think this scale's been set, well, in my 15 years here. The pay in all the public works was set through labor agreement. And those certified positions, operator positions, were always sorta in the same proportion to the other position. I think they, you know, require a little higher level of accountability, you know, you gotta go get the certification, so I think that's some justification for the pay to be higher than the rest of the staff in public works. But I agree, we haven't had a job study done, you know, is this a reasonable place of pay? Yeah, that's a good question.
Alan, did you, you talked to me before, council, did you answer it, or...
Well, I just raised more questions for me.
Go ahead.
I guess I'm sensing here that we have the distinction of hourly employees and salaried employees. Is that a fair way to put it?
Well, no, he's, Peg's got some hourly in her department.
And the hourly, the hourly employees that you have, Peg, are, there's a range of pay scale?
There's a wage compensation schedule that is, has been used for years since 2001. It's been updated every couple of years when we have a pay increase, and it gives a minimum mid-range and a maximum for a position, and it does cover all of the positions within departments that weren't union in the past. And it really gives you a basis for hiring in when you hire a new individual. It also gives you a looksee to see if the people in your department are being paid fairly and accordingly. I just think that it's time to make sure that all of the departments have these, the schedule in place, so that they're being treated... schedule in place, so that they're being treated similarly even without the union.
Would you say that your employees, then, with this range of pay available, is it based more on time and grade or performance combination?
Each, each department has levels, so there'll be a Level 12 that may be a supervisory level, Level 1's going to be a less, a position with less responsibility, and then within each level, there are minimum, mid-range, and maximum pay per hour salary. And it was put in place in 2001 based on job descriptions that many of them have not been updated since that point. It's just a really good jumping off place to say this needs to be redone, needs to be looked at again.
Well, in the specific case, then, of what we're talking about here, there's not that kind of pay range?
Yeah, we do, no pay range. We do not have a step system that many of you probably are familiar with, you know, and sort of a time and grade. But the certified positions are kind of graduated, obviously, right? They step up as they get the certification, but there is no pay range.
And is that unique to water and wastewater? In other words, are there any other departments?
These were, these were union.
Okay.
Street departments would be the same.
And I would say the police are very similar, because they've got set pay.
Street, the ex-street public works employees that were union have the same situation.
Okay.
If we hired someone tomorrow for this position, we have no range, that's the hourly rate. So what, I think what Peg is looking at is, you know, now the unions are gone, other than police, you know, we need to probably reevaluate these positions and look at a range. In the past, what's happened is where you're adding your range, if, if we got a 2% raise or 3% raise, the range moved with you. So you really didn't move in the range in the past 10 years.
Yeah, I would say there's a couple anomalies, but most, 95% of folks are probably at the 15%, 20% into the range. And every year, as John said, the range just shifts and everybody stays in the same. But the ranges, as Peg had said, are being updated every year, so we have a good tool for recruiting, you know, when we have a position vacancy.
Well, I think in the instant case here, I see nothing wrong with approving this, but we've got to get our arms around this whole personnel issue, I think. And is it, I don't know if it's the Personnel Committee that's appropriate place for that, or...
We don't, well, we're not going to have Personnel Committee anymore, so.
It's the council.
But yes.
We're ready for the council.
There may be a problem, yeah.
Well, I don't know that there's a problem. I mean, all council members would like to be a part of this, and that's why we're doing it as a committee of the whole versus five members.
I understand that, but I think if, for example, Henry were to come in with a proposal that would unify the system, that might be a good way to address it.
There might be a budget request in there a little bit, because I think when you do these kinds of things, sometimes you don't want an internal person making some judgments here. I think sometimes you need a little outside, objective people that can say things and leave, that, you know, might not be accepted too well, some by various groups of people. But there's a process, and we went through it, Mayor, you were on council at the time, I think Paul Hagan was here. It was a pretty extensive process.
But that was, when you had a union?
No, it was, we just did non-representative employees at the time. But it was, it was, yeah, 12, 13 years ago.
John, just for my information, so Ryan has gotten his certificate for class one status. Has his job changed?
Uh, no. The job position's the same. He'll, as he continues to take classes and pass those classes, and with time served in service, he can move up into classes. So he'll learn, he'll learn through, he can learn through the certification process, the classroom aspect of it.
Okay, and was there expectations from him that he would get a pay increase if he was to do this?
Yes, yeah. And as a staff as well, I think what Henry, when we brought this to Henry, what Henry realized is this was never formalized, you know, because this was the old union contract, I think. He's trying, what Henry's trying to do is formalize this process, because it was probably never voted on once the union was broken up.
Okay, and these, he had to take classes to get this and test?
Yes.
Who paid for those?
The city.
City did pay for it?
Yes, and we would encourage...
Who paid for it to, for him to, to get to a higher level?
Right, and I...
Plus, he got his 2% and 3% pay increase.
Yes.
Okay.
But we would want to encourage him to keep moving up in this manner. It's a, it's a form of continuing education as well for him, but we would prefer all our operators be at the highest level.
John, you mentioned time and service. I'm not up to speed on those certifications. How long does he have to be a class one operator before he can qualify?
I don't know offhand. I think it was one year was for the, for this level?
Yeah.
You know, I think, I don't know what the others are offhand.
Yeah, and our other guys, there's nobody else in the pipeline to move up.
No.
Everybody in water's in good shape. You know, those guys are all about the upper level.
Correct.
Any other discussion, questions? You are probably, if you vote for this tonight, you are setting a precedent, probably, if you're going to treat all employees equally. Peg?
I just, I would like to put in a recommendation to do a pay study. I think that it's been done at other organizations, governmental organizations recently, and I, I think it's time to really take a good look at how our city is compensating their well-deserving employees, and I would just recommend that. I know it is a budgetary consideration, but I would hope that everybody in this room would think that it would be appropriate after 12 years.
Well, when we do that study, there's an anticipation that employees are going to get raises, because that's exactly what happened the last time we did it. I went through that. And I don't disagree that we need a pay study, but we don't have additional money to give to employees. And so if we set up a graduated scale here, it creates a budget issue, because we're giving them pay raises after we've already passed a budget. So unless you can figure out which people are going to have graduate to these next classes and you include that in your budget, where's the money going to come from? You know, now, in this case, it comes from wastewater, which is an enterprise fund, so I'm assuming it comes out of reserves to cover his wage increase. I don't, I don't doubt, as Alan said, that, that Ryan deserves this pay increase and he anticipates it. I'm just seeing an issue here that we might be setting a precedent here. Our governor gave us the opportunity to get rid of unions here, and what we're doing by setting up a pay scale is basically taking the, the pay scale and unionizing it here. So it's, you know, again, I, this is one individual that's requesting it. We've had other individuals. We had an individual in the library that got a pay raise this year. You know, I mean, we've had other individuals that have gotten raises outside of their 2% or 3%. So if we want to just treat Ryan differently here, I would think that that would be more appropriate than trying to set up a scale here at this time until we decide how we want to do it for all future employees, too.
Can this be handled with Ryan just, he's class one certified now? I don't know what he's making now, if he expected a raise. It's comes out of the enterprise fund. Can we, instead of setting up this actual scale, can we just give him a raise?
Yeah, that's basically what I just said, but yeah, we certainly can do that. I think he's making, he must be making $20.12. So he would go from $20.12 an hour to $20.79 an hour.
I think he's, he was uncertified, right, John?
Yes.
So in 2013, Mayor, you're right, yes, you're right, 2012 is what he's making.
So he'd be looking at a 67 cents an hour pay raise.
I think he deserves it, because he went through the classes and he did the job, and it was, I would assume that John and the rest of the city gave him the distinct idea that he was going to get a raise when he got to this level. And so I think he really deserves it. The city didn't say, well, no, you're not going to get it just because you're going to go to class one. They really, in effect, said you are going to get it when you go to class one. But I think he definitely deserves it.
I don't think we're saying that he doesn't deserve it. I like what the mayor says. We've got to be careful, look down the road here about where the money's coming from in the budgets. We maybe didn't realize that at the time, but I don't think it's about the deserving. It's about, we've got to watch our step here with spending our money. Make sure we got our peas crossed there.
Okay, so I, the question I answered, and I probably should ask City Attorney, I think Paul Mayo asked, could we just give him a raise? Is that on the agenda tonight? Okay, so that is an option that you have.
Scale, right.
I would, I would move that we give, authorize John to give Ryan a pay raise to $20.79 per hour.
Second?
Motion by Mayo, second by Hackett, that we approve a pay raise from, for Ryan Giefer from the $20.12 per hour he's making to the $20.79 an hour that he will, will be making in the future. Any discussion?
Mayor, if I could, would that be effective tonight, or actually, May 22nd was the date of his one-year anniversary, which he qualified for class one at that point?
About May 22nd.
Thank you.
You're second with that? Okay. All right, any other discussion? Voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay. Next, we have new business. We have a...
Mr. Mayor, do we still have to address the issue of the pay scales for water and wastewater?
Okay, do you want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I would move that we deny the recommendation as a blanket approval for all certification, certifications.
Okay. So we have a motion by Keeland that we are denying City Administrator Henry Valiker's request.
Second.
On the pay scales. Second by Mayo. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Thank you, Alan, for that. Okay, next, then, we have new business. We have a request from City Attorney John Hart to extend his agreement. You have his letter in there, which is near the end of our packet. It's on page 185, and he explains exactly the situation there. He is actually asking for a request and increase to his contract. Any comments? Any discussion, John, you want to? No? He is asking for a pay increase. Jeannie compared last month's pay to him?
I...
Okay, so she picked two months, and it amounted to about $500 to $600. Three, I'm sorry. You say it, then.
Between $300 and $500 per month.
Okay, so anywhere from $300 to $500 more, depending on the amount of time that he spends with us, well, his firm spends with us. And you can see that he has not asked for a pay increase since he started with us, which was before I was even mayor.
2002.
Yeah, 2002.
2002.
This takes effect January 1st? Or immediately?
January 1st.
January 1st. So that will be in next budget?
Yep.
Okay. Motion, anybody?
I'd move that we renew Attorney Hart's agreement for two years, beginning January 15th, 2014, at a rate of $150 per hour.
Right.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion by Mayo, second by Lockwood, that we approve our two-year contract with Attorney, City Attorney John Hart, with a pay increase to $150 per hour. Any discussion? Sandy, a color roll?
Julian Peterson?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Shamble?
Aye.
And Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, nothing under unfinished business. We do have a presentation, he's been sitting here, they've all been sitting here through the whole present, or through our meeting tonight. We have a Mr. Bill Zeinert. I don't see Mike Colas here tonight, but they're going to give a presentation on the Opaaca County Tourism Promotion Project. Bill?
Well, good evening, Dave. I know it's been a long meeting, so I won't keep you long, but there are some very exciting things that have been happening and are coming to fruition here this month with the county tourism project. We were here last year to give you an update as to...
Hey, Bill.
We are on TV, so we will.
Oh, well, absolutely.
Thank you.
Normally, I'm clapping loud.
This will tone you down. Translate any mispronounced words. I ask this really bothering. What if you didn't sign it?
All right, while this warms up and does its thing, the, the county tourism grant is a unique, even within the state, through the Joint Effort Marketing Program that the state provides. Opaaca County is one of the first counties to be able to bring together eight municipalities to participate in the program, and that's unique within the state. And what we've been able to do is through the efforts of folks on the committee, the chambers that are involved in the county, to be able to put together a strategic plan that'll help move county tourism forward. You know, you folks here in Opaaca are no strangers to the positive effects of tourism. You do so many things so well with that. The rest of the county typically lag behind that. And part of this process was to join together, learn from what you've been doing in Opaaca, as well as bringing out some of the opportunities that are available in the rest of the county. If Mike were here, and he may yet make it, but really, the, the economy of Opaaca County is what we call a three-legged stool with manufacturing, agriculture, and of course, tourism. Over the last, I would, six to eight years, Mike and Dave Teal, along with the chambers, have been working through various programs to cultivate a broader look at tourism within the county, and certainly even from a commerce standpoint. You know, growing up, all of our small towns, we, you know, we play each other in sports, and, you know, even today, asking someone to drive to, from Clintonville to New London is like asking them to, you know, drive to Madison. They just don't see the county as an entity, and part of these programs has been to help break down some of those barriers, encourage people to cooperate across the various parts of the county. This culminated in the Joint Effort Marketing Grant, where in the... This culminated in the Joint Effort Marketing Grant, where in the second of a three-year process, the first year was really a strategic look at the county. And we did some research and development, which we'll touch on here as we go forward. And then also develop a unified brand promise for county tourism. That's something that you and, again, Wapaka have had for a long time. But the county, the rest of the county didn't have a unified statement, and we were able to put that together. And the idea of It's Your Day came through, one of the great things about Wapaka County is we have some A-plus assets here. And we have them in very narrowly defined categories. But what we do have, we have in spades. And whether you're into rodeos, or antique cars, or silent sports, we've got some very important niches that we can serve when it comes to tourism that are really very competitive with the rest of the state. We're not Wisconsindels, and we don't want to be. And we're not their county necessarily. We don't want to be. But we are Wapaka County, and we have some really special things to offer. And this program has been put together to help educate folks across the state and in some very specific areas about what we have to offer. Now, some of the tools that we've brought to bear, and as part of this process, one of the things we identified early on is that many of the smaller towns, the municipalities, were not taking advantage of some of the digital communication tools that are available now. And our research indicated that more and more people are moving to the web to make their decisions about where they're going to vacation and how they plan their vacation. So we've turned to some of these tools to help small business people, the first of which is targeted cable television. Now, you're looking at a map here of the Fox Cities, essentially. It's color-coded. And what that allows us to do, or any advertiser really, is to really target in with cable television advertising to specific geographies. And by doing that, we narrow the band, we lower the cost of ads, and can increase frequency. So you can place an ad just in the purple, or you can place it just in the yellow, or you can place it in all zones. And this will make a little bit more sense as we bring this all back around. Part of the research that we did is we've got data from folks who've actually come and stayed in Wapaka County. And what we did is we partnered with a research company called Claritas. And what they do is they own, they're from a company called VNU, which doesn't mean a whole lot until you learn that VNU owns Arbitron, which does all of the radio ratings. They also own Nielsen, which does all the TV ratings. There were Scarborough and Scantron that does a lot of tracks that's bought at grocery stores. And what they're able to do is based on your address, they're able to put you into one of 62 lifestyle categories. And based on that category, they're able to tell us all kinds of really great things, like what kind of cars you typically are going to buy, the TV shows you like to watch, the radio stations that you'll typically listen to. And they're, they're really quite accurate, almost to a scary level, quite honestly. And what we found is that there were, there are a number of patterns, but the four best patterns were these four clusters of people, the Blue Highways, the Simple Pleasures, the Traditional Times. These are people whose lifestyle already brings them, has brought them to Wapaka County. So the question then is, where are these people in the rest of the state? Where are they saturated? And how can we reach them to tell more people who share this lifestyle pattern about the county? So what we found is that there were two major areas in the Milwaukee market that held this pattern of lifestyle. The first were the northern suburbs. The second was what they call the western suburbs. We would call it Waukesha. So just like the previous map we saw where it was color-coded, we're able to reach people specifically within the colored regions. And this did two great things for us. First is it's a high saturation market for those key lifestyles that we have reasonably believe would enjoy time in Wapaka County. The second is that they're over 90 miles away. And why that's important is that the state tells us, and our experience bears out, that you have to drive over 90 miles to consider staying overnight as a traveler. Otherwise, you're a day tripper. And we're not against that, but the way the Gem Grant works is that we're supposed to target and need to target overnight stays. So this gets us both and gets us into those markets. So the initial plan was to run from April through June. If you remember April in Wapaka County, it was not the most hospitable of months. So given the late spring, we pushed things off. And we started running TV in late May, right after the holiday, and are running currently in the Milwaukee market on targeted cable networks. And you can see just a handful of those that are there. Cable television, for the first time, is rivaling network TV and viewership. And really, in some cases, even outpulling network TV. Duck Dynasty in particular, when it premiered this year, outpulled some of its, or many of, the so-called appointment TV on broadcast television. 1,200 spots will be running, or in the process of running. Then we were able to bring to bear a second part of that digital process. And this is called the Advertising Network, the Time Warner Cable, the Milwaukee Cable stations offer. And this is where we're, again, we're able to, one of the themes is to take hold of some of these new digital tools and bring them to Main Street. Many times, these are and have been available to larger companies for some time. But our hope is to be able to bring them down to the Main Street level, to make them affordable and accessible through this joint work for small business. So for example, with this particular web advertising, it uses standard banners, as you've probably experienced on the web, but it places them in the top 250 trafficked websites in the United States. You can see a couple of examples here. But the interesting thing that we're able to do is to, again, just like with the cable TV, specifically target based on content, contextual content. And here are the really exciting things as a marketer. Your demographics and the behavior that your computer has shown in the past. Whether we know it or not, typically, unless your computer is locked down, you are, every site you go to, you leave a trail. And this system that places ads reads that trail. So if, for instance, you're a web browser and you've been visiting sites about walleye fishing, or fishing in general, you go to NFL.com, you're from the targeted areas in Milwaukee, you'll see an ad for Wapaka County. Somebody from that same area goes to the same site. They don't have that behavioral profile. They see some other ad. So we're literally on a case-by-case basis, able to put our ads in front of viewers. And that really helps stretch our budget. What you're looking at here is the investment that we've put forth in media for our five-week run in June. This is the state's component of the two-year process. They're pitching in $20,000. And you can see it breaks out between cable TV and pay-per-click ads with the audience network. And that's one of the great things with taking advantage of the state grant. We're able to spend and learn about these, these tools and really hone our processes for our small businesses to take advantage of on the state's budget, which we all know is, our budgets aren't necessarily always growing. So it's a great opportunity. One of the other cues we took from the state is kind of mining local resources as part of talking to people about the county. And two of our partners here, Roger Radley and Mad Dog and Merrill, are involved with the site. Specifically, Roger is part of our TV production. And Mad Dog and Merrill, we've worked out a deal with them where we're featured, Wapaka County, that is, on their syndicated television show. They're in 28 markets around the Midwest, ranging from Green Bay to Duluth, over to the Twin Cities, down to Davenport, Iowa, and over into Michigan. And each week they're on, it varies on a market. But we'll, we have TV spots running in their half-an-hour program, as well as they're going to do two segments specifically on Wapaka County. So we'll get even further reach as we talk to folks about Wapaka County. But if everything works here, I think I'm... Let's see if I'm live on the internet here. I was previously. What you're looking at is the homepage for the new visitwapakacounty.com. We've accomplished a lot of changes and pulled together some different resources here to help share the experience of Wapaka County with visitors. Pardon me while I get combobulated here. What we've done essentially initially is to build an interactive map that we can invite businesses to be a part of. Now, when we started this idea to be able to bring together a resource to share everything about the county from a tourism standpoint, I really thought we'd have 200 or 300 entries. At last count, we've got just over 1,300 and several thousand pictures. So, and, and growing every day. And the reason it's growing is that at a baseline level, it's free to absolutely any business, any organization that wants to have a listing. Now, so that's everything from, of course, our restaurants and hotels, down to, you know, the Amish bake sale. You can have a free listing on here. So all of that traffic that's being driven from the, from the TV ads, from all the internet advertising, brings people here, and they can search and experiment and learn about Wapaka County as they plan their trips. All right. But we wanted to take it one step further here, and I apparently can't talk and scroll at the same time. And one of the things, as a writer, kind of breaks my heart, but the reality is, is that folks don't read like they once did. And when it comes to the internet, they read even less than was normally. I may have gone offline here. Hang on, technical difficulties? Does anyone know the correct internet? I got it? Okay.
Yep.
All right. So what we're able to do, as T-Dubs comes up here, is we're able to work with local businesses and put together small videos, 90 seconds to two minutes, specifically on the, the business, and allow people to go to, we've put together also a YouTube channel that houses all the videos. We have just about 40 videos finished at this point. And we're always looking for, we're always looking for additional businesses to be a part of what we're trying to do. There we go. So, I think this is loaded. So we've got the, the YouTube channel. And there are tutorials that help tell about how to put a listing on. So the listings are free, so anyone can do that. But there's a little how-to section to help people figure out what exactly, how to navigate the site. Here's the Apple Tree Lane Bed and Breakfast.
My name is Terry Keel. My husband Mike and I own the Apple Tree Lane Bed and Breakfast here in Wapaka, Wisconsin. Just happened to trip upon this beautiful homestead. The home was actually built in 1880. I walked in the front door, had a wonderful, warm and welcoming feeling. I just love the, love the home. We're on seven and a half acres and 400 feet of this beautiful Crystal River frontage. First of all, we tried to create an environment that feels like you're somewhere special, but not so...
So it's about, this one's a little bit longer. We won't go to the entire three minutes. But what we've done is built listings then that include photos, the video. You can also get directions to the business wherever you are. And the baseline listing, again, is free for any business. Now, the chamber has put together an enormous amount of information, hundreds of listings, and hundreds of pictures. And it was a ton of work that Jeff and Terry went through to put this together. And it's a great start. The reality is, is that with 1,300 listings and growing, there's going to be people who weren't in that initial push. There's going to be events that didn't make it. And our hope is that folks can go out on behalf of their organization, update their information. You can claim a listing. If you are the owner, you can see right here, if asked if you're a business owner, you go ahead, you click that link, you fill out the form, it comes back to us. We confirm that this person really is the owner of this business. And we give them access to their own data. And then they can make all the upgrades that they want from the standpoint of the basic free listing. We do offer two other options. And we can just go ahead here and look at the ad listing part of it. We've got some additional bells and whistles that businesses can take advantage of. Again, trying to do things that are simple and cost-effective. The first level after free is called the...
The basic listing. And the basic listing is additional photo. You can do a photo gallery, as well as connect your website, your email, your Facebook, your Twitter feed, any of those digital channels that a business might be using already. And then the second level is called a featured listing. And that's where we come out. We shoot the video. That's $49.99 a month. And again, that's subsidized by the municipalities at this point. And as well as the, Terry, help me out. What's the acronym for the? Thank you very much. I get my acronyms sometimes misled. So this is all for, through June, subsidized by all these different groups. So we're able to do this for businesses for basically $50 a month, or a $600 fee. You can pay for it on the website through Google Checkout. All the money goes directly to the county. It doesn't go to any of the chambers. It goes right back to the program with the idea being, we want to make this program self-sufficient so that we can continue to advertise on behalf of the consortium of eight communities and continue to drive traffic and, and help people learn about all the great things we have here in Wapaka County. So to that end, hop back to our PowerPoint. Right here, these are the contributions that the municipalities have, have given in year one and year two. The contributions are essentially broken up by the amount of population. So you can see the different percentages there and what they're equivalent to. Excuse me, year one, we had 34,000 from the state. Year two, 20,000. There is a third year that we can and will apply for. But typically, it drops again by half roughly. So there's perhaps like $10,000 out there. What we're asking the municipalities to consider for the 2014 year is a total contribution of $12,000 as a group. So you can see the various municipalities involved, and then the corresponding percentages of population to help support the project and continue to build as a community. We're able with our resources together to do so much more than we are individually. And as of this evening, we've had just under 1,500 unique viewers to the website in the last two weeks. We've served just under 10,000 pages, and we've got several weeks to go. So it's an exciting time to be able to teach people about Wapaka County and share what we have here. So as you go forward for your planning, please consider us. And if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions?
I know it's been a long meeting.
No, great. That's really good. All right, thank you very much.
Here.
Okay. Next, we have Communications Recommendations of the Mayor. Don't forget that we have our next council meeting, which is on July 2nd. And otherwise, that's it.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I'll make it quick. Henry, when you are going to put the schedules together, the new ordinance for the meeting? the new ordinance for the meetings, I know I remember a question about 6 o'clock or 6:30. Will that be addressed? Do you want to know what we all prefer?
I was assuming 6:00 maybe. I heard more like before that. But I think that's just something you could tweak when we bring it forward. Be 6:30 is a better time.
I don't know.
Probably get a meal or whatever. Yeah. I think that it was loud and clear, get it consistent.
Yeah, I have it the same.
Right, right. But I didn't know it was about 6:00 or 6:30.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is July 2nd, 2013. Subject of call. Wow, you people really want to get out of here, don't you? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Thanks. We're adjourned at 8:38 PM. Thank you.